...and tonight we have the pleasure of having Lead here with Mr. Paul Kelly and Krista and a group of Lead students to receive or work to commemorate their award.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so on behalf of, who is that? On behalf of the Jefferson Award, Lead was regional winners. We've been asked to go to the national competition in DC, which we leave in June, early June, June 16th to the 18th. And so these are two of our leaders that we'll be sending, one of course, myself to Washington, DC. We have, we're hoping to present this in front of you guys because we're really excited about this experience, but also our motivation for being here is that our two members here are going to be presenting a summary of what we've done this year at the national competition. So we're hoping to see any kind of preparation for them as well. Jennifer Kim, who was the actual spokesperson for the regional awards, is not here today unfortunately, but her competition was videoed and that will be taken to the national level in DC as well. So I'd like to just give our students an opportunity to share with you a summary of what we've done this year, and then we also have a PowerPoint presentation where we can give you a little more detail.
Good.
This is the one-minute speech that they're supposed to give at the national, so we figured if they have the courage to go in front of some of the folks that they knew they'll be just fine, so feel free to give them a feedback or anything, this is their competition.
Very good.
Hi, I'm Lucy.
And I'm Amanda. We are from Chalk City, Minnesota. We are in a group called LEAD, which stands for Leaders in Education and Diversity. Our group is made up of different cultural backgrounds. This year we have accomplished many things. By engaging our school, we purchased flags that represent every student in our school's nationality.
We also host the school's talent show and competition, and every year we have amazing talent. This year we had a big project. We teamed up with author and photographer John Moltner. He wrote a book called The Peace of My Mind. In his book, each page has a portrait of a person he had interviewed, and they tell us five stories on how they found peace.
We wanted to replicate his project and create our own in the community, so we interviewed students and staff of how they found peace. With this project, we put together a one act. We got to share students' story and hope that it'll change people's perspective of judgment and respect.
We also do a lot of volunteer work in our community. Our LEAD motto is "One Voice, One Community, One World," and we try to show that in the things that we have done this year. Thanks for having us here, it means a lot to us.
What do you guys think?
Great job.
Good job.
Can you tell us a little, maybe you're planning on doing that, Chris? Tell us a little bit more about the upcoming trip that's going to take place?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Jefferson Award. It's something that was established back in 1972 to recognize public service. It's sort of the, as their website said, the Nobel Peace Prize for public service. This is what the kids were doing. They have different degrees and different sections, and this is for the students in action. So we'll be going there in June for a couple of days. They will be representing the state of Minnesota. There are other schools from other states that will be there, and so they're going up the next level to the national, and that's their little speech. And they'll also meet some politicians, you know, the Senate's, they'll be visiting with their local senators, and they're also going to be all kinds of service projects they'll be doing as well, working with, they're going to network with other students in other schools around the country, and then it all culminates in a big grand ball. The big winners will be announced. We're hoping for celebrities, we're hoping for Obama, but I think Oprah is the biggest O that the kids want to meet Oprah, because Oprah did receive the Jefferson Award in the past, so they're hoping to spot Oprah there and get a selfie with Oprah, right?
Yeah.
If you wanted to know more, I, we just presented just a quick thing about some of the things that they did to earn this award. Our group is, was formed in 2008, and a part of our goal is to celebrate diversity in our schools and educate staff and students and community about diversity and also public service. We host a lot of events, multicultural events, and also try to incorporate a lot of activities that we can do at other schools. That's one of the things that the Jefferson Awards look for is community engagement and your impact. How big of an impact have you made in your school and in your community? The flags, you probably, some of you guys have seen the flags, so we did that. We purchased the flags. And it's kind of growing because we keep having students who are new to the school that keep saying, "My country's not up there," so we have to scramble and try to get a flag to represent, and it's starting to go further and further out, so it's kind of fun, it's a living thing.
Our goal, our next step is to, excuse me, have some sort of identification, like a plaque that identifies exactly what the flag, what flag looks like and, you know, what that represents, so people can just say, you know, what, where are these, what is this flag?
We did host an event there for the high school kids, a little contest during lunch to see if they could identify the flags, and it was really fun. We need a little help on some geographies here and there, but it was hilarious, and the prize was candy, so it was very educational for the kids, offer them candy, and they were quick to answer what flag that was. There will be a plaque there too that explains what it is. Our talent show always involves the entire community. We get our drama teachers to participate, our music teachers. The mayor has been one of our judges for the past three years. Mary's been there, I think Chuck has attended one in the past, so we try to involve a lot of folks. The biggest one we've ever done was innovation. Jefferson Awards want innovative ideas, so this was our innovative ideas. We teamed up with John Moltner, he's a photographer and reporter for National Geographic, he's even written for them, and then we also partnered with Alina, who helped fund because we needed to pay John for his exhibit, and coming and teaming up with our kids to show him how to take pictures, show him how to write, how to interview. So these are skills that they just learned from John on how do you do as a reporter, write people's stories? Then they used the stories that they wrote and wrote their own play to act out some of the things they learned from that, and it's all about peace and how people, despite their challenges, find peace in themselves.
And the play pretty much consisted of students' actual stories, and half of the students that were performing were performing their own story. So it was really powerful. I mean, we had four, it was basically four, you know, individual experiences and students. The crowd pretty much gave them standing ovation after each, what do you call that?
One act.
One act. Definitely we got a good response from the crowd. And then we actually went on to use those as a curriculum in the, in the, in the high school. We used two of the videos during homerooms and then had some questions that were going along with that, so, you know, we got to do, use it in a community setting, but also with all of our high school students, so it's a pretty powerful experience.
We also participated in, we won second place in the 2013 Mormon Holiday Challenge. We collected over 2, 2,500 pounds of food and warm clothing for people in need in the area. Hoping for first place, but we got edged out by somebody, so, yeah.
It's per capita.
But we involved a lot, a lot of people from our own community who were driving up and dumping stuff and donating stuff, so it was really cool to see that. And that's just our group, what we do. We get a lot of alumni that come. They recently participated in the college panel for avid students. Those LEAD students who are now in college talk to our current avid students about what's it like to be in college and how you get to college. They keep coming back. Our alumni love to come back, and this is how much money we raised recently, 800 bucks for our talent show, and we're going to use that towards buying more flags or whatever other endeavors we think we'll do next year. And also we're starting to expand. We hope to reach out to sixth graders and junior high next, and maybe some of them will be, by the time they get to high school, they'll be able to join LEAD in the high school.
Any comments or questions?
I got to see her one act, it was fantastic. Was it awesome?
And by the way, he's an awesome actor, so that's a heck of a compliment.
Yeah, the cool thing is that these are not traditional drama people.
Yeah, they're never actors.
These are just like, it's pretty edgy, real kind of story type stuff, so, yeah. I love my group, they do amazing things, and I'm proud to send them to DC, because they're killing it on the national level, so that's a pleasure.
We hope to come back with an national, so we'll see.
And we're planning next year to enter the talent show doing the song Happy.
That would be great.
You're on rendition, I hope?
Yes.
We do welcome staff. We welcome staff. That would be awesome.
You guys have done amazing things, your students and the two of you, to get a program that's so young, doing so much, accomplishing so much. I'm not surprised by the award. I've heard from so many parents who say that your group for their students made them feel like the first time that they belonged to the district, and that's saying a lot. So I appreciate all the things that you do. Your students are wonderful examples. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck at the national.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll move to the consideration in the agenda. We have some additions and deletions. We have to add to item 4.12 with another resignation. We're rescinding an unpaid people absence, and we're removing from the agenda 5.1 on the org chart, it would be discussed at a future meeting. But those changes, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will carry. Thank you very much, and we'll go to old business discussion items, 5.1, oh, we skipped that one. We just skipped it.
Made it easy.
Pardon me?
Consent.
I'm sorry. A motion to approve consent?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will carry. Thank you everybody for that. I was so pleased that I had gotten through the changes to the agenda. And we'll go to old business action, item 6.1, the second reading of the 2014-15 preliminary budget.
Before we do that, Mary, would you mind going back to 5.2 and then Nancy will take us through the secondary design team update?
We're forgetting about you, Nancy.
We're going to be 5.1 or later?
That was the one we took off. 5.1. That's right. We'll do the strike throughs.
Sorry, Nancy.
Okay. We need to meet everyone. Rod and I thought we would just share a little bit, because as you know, next week is our next meeting with Guiding Coalition, so just going to share a little bit about what's happening in our secondary design team meetings, so that you're kind of part of that process. Then you'll see a more formal presentation on May 22nd when we have our Guiding Coalition meeting again. And so where I'd like to start is just talking about the work from our deep dive meeting, which was actually a few weeks ago when we met with Jim Rickabob, who is the executive director of CISA-1, which is, what would be similar to is our Metro Exu, only in Wisconsin they call them Cises. And Jim has kind of made a national, he's become kind of a national leader around personalized learning. And so during our deep dive meeting that we had a few weeks ago, we had him remote in, in video conference with our design team, and one of the things that he shared with us is this honeycomb. And when you look at the honeycomb, which I think was loaded to board book for you over the weekend, it really talks about an organizing framework for looking at how to consider sort of redesigning schools around some core principles. And so what we're going to do in a little bit is watch a short clip of Jim talk about the honeycomb, but I just kind of wanted to visually just kind of talk to you about the three blue dock pieces, which are called the Core Components, Learning Profile, Customized Learning Paths, and then Proficiency-Based Progress. Because that's what we decided in design team after listening to Jim talk, is that we would use this honeycomb as an organizing framework for our work. And he'll talk to you about why they're encouraging districts to do so, and why focusing kind of on the center and then working your way out is a good way to think about design of your schools. And so when you look at those three areas, that's where we have spent a bulk of our meetings over the last few meetings that we've had, learner profiles, customized learning paths, and proficiency-based progress. And really what a learner profile is, and this aligns perfectly with our strategic plan of the district, is really about what does an individualized learning plan look like, and what should be in an individualized learning plan? And part of what Jim's work has been with CISA-1 and the Wisconsin school districts that are part of CISA-1, has really been looking at making sure that there's a rich, comprehensive view of students, that's not strictly just based on standardized test scores, but many different things and factors to consider when you think about working with individual students. And then the second area is customized learning pathways for students that are really based on student interest, strength, learning style. This has a lot with some of the discussion you've already heard coming out of the design team of going more from teacher-directed learning to more student-centered approach, and that allowing students to be partners with teachers and determining sort of their pathways of how they learn best and at their own pacing. And then the last part of that core component is proficiency-based product, or progress, which is really about moving from a traditional grading system to doing assessment and advancement of learning that's based on mastery of critical standards and skills, and less about, did you sit in the chair for a semester, and if so, you know, do you get the credit? And more about moving students along based on their readiness level, rather than just based on, you know, artificial age fans, or, you know, whether or not you put in the sort of the time in the chair in order to gain the credit. And that's really the premise of the core part of the component. Jim goes on here, and we had to be a little bit creative because our sound, while we videotaped Jim, the sound was a little bit strange, we had a little technical problem today, but I think Sarah and Crystal and Angie were able to kind of work it out. So we're going to play just a four-minute clip where he talks a little bit more in-depth about the honeycomb, and then I'm going to show you some of the work of the design team and how it matches with this.
We hope this worries.
It's a honeycomb. So let me just sort of, given those, that sort of innovation platform at the core, around that surrounding of these really rich instructional strategies that go from rapid cycle feedback...
Whoops. Okay, what happened?
That's the worked-out version.
Am I just messing up, I'm sorry?
All right. Should I pick it up? Is it because we took out this?
I think that I am doing that.
Okay, so hold on. Cool.
Rapid cycle feedback, and we know that...
Oh, I might go back here.
So let me just sort of, given those, that sort of innovation platform at the core, around that surrounding of these really rich instructional strategies that go from rapid cycle feedback, and we know that good quality feedback is close to real time, can be a learning accelerator. In fact, the research for that goes back to Black and Williams in the late 1990s. We found that if we infuse student voice, and I've really talked about that through this whole presentation, this idea that not that the classroom is taken over by the learner, but that the learner's concern and perspective is taken into account when we make instructional decisions, when we make environmental decisions within the classroom. The idea of customized responsive instruction, that we, that we hear our instruction to what students are ready to learn, rather than what's the next thing in my lesson plan book, or what did I teach next last year, or even for that matter, what's the next topic in the curriculum? Do we focus more on the learner and less on the outside structure? You can see the rest of those, certainly thinking about assessment in more robust ways, and focusing increasingly on assessment as learning in addition to assessment for and of learning. And again, we can come back and talk about these in greater detail if you'd like to. So that's sort of the instructional strategy piece. Now around that, what we found is this sort of, the idea of shifting relationships and roles, and I will tell you when we started this, it was interesting. This was, you know, the work from two, three years ago was about how this, this work really does change the role of the learner, of the teacher, and that is absolutely true. It's a more, it's a more of a simplification to say, you know, you go from sage on the stage to guide on the side. Certainly that's there, but there's a lot more to that change in role from a learner's, from a teacher's perspective. And it is, by the way, in many ways, much more meaningful, much more impactful work, not less, not less rigorous, not necessarily easier, but it does allow us to get much closer to understand learners at greater depth and have more influence there. What we did not see on the front end was this change in the role of the learner, from a more passive role to a much more active, from, you know, the sort of compliance to commitment that I talked about earlier. This idea of being a co-designer of their learning, not someone who's sitting back as a receptive to be filled with knowledge of the teacher. But this shift around that, that really, by the way, we found now accelerates the learning. So you can move the needle on student learning if you just do the three core components and the instructional strategies around it. What happens is, is if you get to change the role of learner and teacher, this, this work really accelerates, and by the way, becomes really fun. And then around the outside, consistent with the five-lever conversation we had earlier, are these sort of structural pieces that put the system in place, that remove barriers and further accelerate the work. So, I mean, that really is the sort of big piece. I will tell you, for people who get in trouble, they tend to start at the outside and move in, as opposed to focusing on those three components on the front end. The other magic to this, by the way, is there are many ways you can put this work together. So it's not a recipe, it is not a lockstep process to follow. It really does allow you to understand your context, your capacity, your community, your students, and be able to design a system that is responsive to what it is you're trying to do, and that is consistent with your context. So it's not a pre-cooked canned model that, you know, here's step one, here's step two, here's step three. There's a sequence to it, but there's much more interaction, there's more organic nature to this, to allow you to create a system that works, works for you. All right, let's go to the next slide.
I apologize that the piece wasn't too good in terms of volume, so I hope you can hear it. I'm looking to help getting this piece. Okay. And, so, but I'd like to go back to the honeycomb. Does everyone have that pulled up? Because I just want to refer to a couple of things on the honeycomb, and then I'm going to dive into the work itself of, I need help still, Sarah.
I'll pull up that honeycomb for you.
No, I can do that because I have it in the PowerPoint, but I don't seem to be able to get out of this.
While you're, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Hey, let me take that for you while you're...
Right, she's going to bring it back up.
How different is this, or how similar is this to an IEP?
Well, you know, I'm going to give you an example of what the design team will look like, and then I think that's going to answer your question you're anticipating. So we're going to come back to Mary's question in a little bit. Because they've actually, they actually took a first stab at what it could look like, so that's why I don't want to jump into that right now. But if you look at, the one thing I want to point out is if you look at the orange circles, and I know it was hard to hear Jim, and again, I apologize for that, those are the kinds of things that after you design within the three core components, you start to look at these other areas that are all really focused around change at the classroom level or at the instructional level. And he, he does a great job with explaining, you can design all kinds of structures, if you don't change what's happening in the classroom between teachers and students, really all that effort is not going to get you where you want to be. And so a lot of what you see around the supporting around the blue core components are the kinds of things that the design team will begin to talk about. Anytime, anywhere, learning, assessment as for learning, on-demand grouping, more learner voice, student voice. He does a great job of talking about, it's in the past, the model was, teacher was on one end, student was the other, teacher tells student, you know, this is what we're going to do. And then he has this great piece in his PowerPoint where the student and the teacher are side by side, and they're kind of co-planning, you know, together, and that that's part of the shift that has to make. So part of the design work is to start to reach out through those other orange pieces and to start really talking about how it looks differently. And then the further out you get into the green and purple, becomes more of that area of now we have to change structure, organization, design, and supporting policies in order to accommodate what's happening on the inside of the honeycomb. Okay? So some of the things that he, he says you would typically see if you're sort of on the right track, the look fours, and he, he does this great job of saying, now, some people will look at this and want to walk through, do classroom walkthroughs, and he said, that's not what we're talking about. He says, from a design perspective, these would be some of your look fours, and it would be this list of where you can see there's flexible pacing happening, there's, kids are going from passive learners to really where they're independent learners, and they're making a lot of choices about their learning and how they get to that final end, but that we all have very clear endpoints, and kids have some flexibility about how they get there. Makes sense? So a lot more flexibility both in space, technology supports this work a lot because it allows for that individualization or that customization, and then more growing independence. So when you look at the work of the design team, what we've done is actually subdivided the design team into three areas, and it's those three core components, those three, and we've started to have this group look at individualized learning plans and then career skills. We're kind of playing around with language still, we'll have that solidified before we go to the Guiding Coalition, because we have one more meeting next Tuesday. But I thought it might be fun for you to literally see, because in some cases they're kind of drawing, and it's obviously a work in progress, but this was their first blush of what an individualized learning plan might look like. What you actually see up here are some spider webs, which is something we came across with Donna Deeds' work in the CAPS Academy, as well as Scott McLeod had some examples of this, where, you know, maybe if you had career skills identified, which we'll talk about next, like maybe collaboration, critical skills, kids would be entering things that would show that spider web expanding as their proficiency expands. Same thing with these core knowledge pieces, and then I just love this, this is a Wordle, and what we were brainstorming is you could do these kind of learning style assessments where it would show what you're particularly strong in, in terms of characteristics, and of course, those words would be bigger than other words, and it would help them with setting their, you know, life goals, and then there'd be a pathway to kind of look at course history, test history, six-year plans, which we need at the secondary level, and portfolio work. So that was kind of the, their initial brush at an individualized learning plan. Then you're just going to see their beginning list of what they call the five Cs. Again, this is all work in progress, but some of the ones based on many lists that they looked at for, you know, skills that would need to be embedded across all content areas, were critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity, and then this fifth one, we're just having a terrible time because we keep trying to find a C. Some people were calling it compassion, some people were calling it citizenship, some people were calling it character, and then Rod found... And then Rod found an Edina video where Edina has five Cs and theirs is, is cultural competence. And that was part of our discussion too. But that's sort of where the working list is at this point. Then another group is working on academic pathways. And this is where getting into some customized pathways, especially at the secondary level. Some of the things that they've identified as critical changes within the classroom itself is giving more choice to kids and families, more flexibility and pacing of classes based on individual needs, project-based learning, making sure we have those clearly defined skills, partnerships with the community, so can things can be more authentic, giving students actually a chance to kind of design their own pathways and more interdisciplinary to help people with connections, help kids with connections. This is kind of a fun one because they, they actually spent a lot of time Googling which are some of the top high-demand, high-skill occupations for the next, as predicted by people, for the next 10 or 15 years. You can see they made a long list. But at the bottom, you can see that they've started to brainstorm. Doesn't mean that it's going to stay like this. Areas of interest or pathways around human services, healthcare, information technology, business and marketing, and I think they added actually something to this one. I think it's engineering, manufacturing, construction, and development. It's a long one. But, and again, this is just a beginning list. But these were some of their key arts and communication was put on the list too. Key areas for organizing frameworks. And then some of the things that all of these would have in common would be student choice, multiple ways to get there, aligned with middle-level programming, local partnerships, and standards integrated into authentic projects. One of the things that we're reading a lot about or seeing is that this generation, this digital generation of kids, don't really tolerate simulations the way like in the old days when I was teaching, you could do a lot of role-playing and that kind of thing. They don't really tolerate that very well. So we have to make it as real as possible. And then the last group has been working more on that assessment or feedback side. And what they were envisioning is assessment from a standard grade report would change so that there would basically be reporting out on things like content knowledge, which would be traditional, but then also content skills, as well as, I think we've started to move towards calling these life skills, either career readiness skills or 21st century skills. We were kind of struggling on what to call it. And then they also had a spider web where you could, you could have a multi-level piece that would expand by grade level, like the different colors you see there would be different grade levels, so you, you could track growth over time. And then have some check marks where things could be checked that, yes, you've mastered standards, or no, not yet. And their kind of summary of where they're at is, there's a need to prepare students for life rather than simply measuring just content knowledge, which is kind of our typical report card at this point. We need a monitoring system that has those three components. And therefore, we should be measuring on a growth continuum and whether or not content is mastered. And, you know, not so much in terms of the traditional piece. So, next steps is we meet again on May 20th, and we'll be kind of expanding as we go. Our plan is Guiding Coalition will give us feedback, we'll take that, refine, but keep growing until we think we're, we're at the point we need to be at. But we have four meetings left, and keep you informed as we go. And then it'll be up to you, obviously, to approve final recommendations. Questions? Did I answer your question, Mary? So you can see what they're starting to think about for an individualized plan.
Are classes generally smaller when you teach this way? Because I can see with each student on their own plan, how do you reach 30 students?
Typically not, at least not in this districts that I'm aware of that are starting to do this. But that's why the technology is such an important component because, and in some ways, we have good examples from elementary teachers of how you do this. But a lot of it is sort of setting your, your kids, your students up to be working on different things all at the same time. Elementary teachers are very good at this. And with the technology, you can have them working in groups or individually, and then be the, you know, the teacher as facilitator, as manager, to make that work. Like when we went to CAPS Academy, you see, you know, they were running, not identical, but similar-sized class sizes, but they had kids working on all different things all at the same time. And the teacher was able to manage that.
It's probably part of that realization that being the sage on the stage just doesn't work anymore. And, you know, you can get to a lot of kids, you can get to 30, 40 kids in a secondary level that with that type of methodology, but it's just not an effective model anymore. Other, other comments or questions?
Just kind of to Mary's point, how do you get the teachers on board to do that though? I mean, some of them, it seems like you wouldn't necessarily have 30 individual plans, maybe you have 10 or 15 or whatever. Do you try to categorize them, or you get some people working as teams, if you will? And then how do you get all your teachers on board, you know, and how does that compete? Third question, I guess, how does that compete with a PLC environment, or can they work together?
Well, PLCs, I would argue, help with that in the sense of teachers then are kind of taking that journey together, and they can use the data from their individual profiles to try to, yes, sometimes you're going to group. You know, I would argue, I think the biggest mistake we make in education is that we swing to extremes. The reality is a classroom, there will be times where a lecture is appropriate still. There are also times where you can just do things just in time. And, you know, Andy Brown, he got so excited, he went back to one of his classes just and revamped a unit just to try it out. And he said what was amazing to him was how it really changed the engagement level of the students. And a lot of his teaching then became just in time. So Group A was working on something, and they needed to know how to cite things a certain way. So he was over there showing them that while others were able to work independently, and you know what I mean? So, you know, is this a huge shift for teachers in terms of how they were taught to teach? Yes. Does it take time for teachers to make this change? Yes. But, you know, our majority of our committee is teachers, and so far, we've seen really nothing but excitement so far. I think they know it's a big challenge. But I think that they are, you know, willing to go there as teacher leaders. And as we get more people involved in the fall with implementation teams, hopefully that carries it. But that's why it's a five-year window. It's not something that's we're going to just turn around and instantly be able to do starting tomorrow.
I think part of our struggle too is that, you know, as being a Southern Ring school, we're always compared to kind of the golden triangle of all the high-flying school districts. And we always do a great job of being just above the state average, in some cases, you know, 10% higher. And so we do a nice job of that. But when, when we look at where we want to go, it's sure not for lack of effort or the time commitment that our teachers put in. And what I'm, what I'm learning and hearing from our teachers is that we can't possibly put in more hours, or we can't possibly do that much more of just putting kind of the nose to the grindstone, working harder. But maybe structurally, if we work smarter, there's a way that we can get up to those other schools that we, we desire to be like. And I think that there is just a very, there is a definite structural piece to us making some significant leaps and bounds with the types of kids that we have. Our kids can compete, they do compete. Our best kids go to the best colleges, they get to go to their colleges of choice. But structurally, a lot of our best kids would do well in any structure. What we're looking at is if you take our secondary redesign now and go from our students who need the most help to the high flyers, what system will work? And I, I'm hearing our teachers say there's a sense of relief that we aren't asking them to just do more and work harder because we know they're already doing that.
You know, and it absolutely takes time to, to change that. And for some teachers, it will be a much more difficult path to getting there. And others, your early adopters who are typically in your leadership committees, they'll, like Andy Brown is an example, start trying things the next day, you know? But, and that's why, when, as it pertains to, you know, second-order change, we have to take a long view. It's not something you can just rush to put in quickly. But if we can put in structures to support the work, then slowly but surely, you know, you get there. And I'm just excited, and so is Dennis. Dennis has remarked every time we meet that he's amazed by the committee, really based on his experience in other districts, because they're just really eager and willing to kind of go outside the box without, you know, really getting hung up on the what-ifs. It's really been Dennis's feedback to us, and he works with lots of districts on this kind of change process, so.
Well, again, I go back to, there's no question, the people we hire are phenomenal teachers. The group that we're working with are phenomenal teachers. We know that our kids are no different than any of the other kids in the Southern Metro Ring here. So if we look at and we compare the teachers being as excellent as any, any group out there, kids who have as diverse of needs as any other district out there, structurally, if we don't change what we're doing, we're going to get the same results that we always do, that we're going to be just a little bit better than average. And I think that we're at a point in time where that's not acceptable anymore, and we're willing to invest to make sure that we do those types of things. And when I say invest, there's a strong investment by our teacher group. It's that grassroots kind of feeling. When we, when you watch our teachers work in this type of a setting, I mean, it's, it's inspiring, it's motivational, it's how, I mean, we're kind of holding them back almost because they want to get going and make these things happen. So I think too, when we, segueing to the meeting that we have coming up on the 22nd, I think our community is going to get a real, a real interesting evening because we're going to take a café approach where these three groups that Nancy brought up, we're going to have some of our teaching experts talking about the work that we're doing in the redesign from the secondary level. And you'll be able to go from café stop to café stop to café stop, think about it, and then come back and reflect as a large group. And while some of the, some of the research stuff is pretty heavy theory, there's a lot of just practical things that they're going to be able to show and explain that I think people, when they walk away, are going to get a sense of, oh, this is what you're talking about. Because we really haven't been able to define how we're making the academic changes and the needs that we have. We just haven't really done a really good job of clarifying that. Coming out of the 22nd, I think it'll be pretty crystal clear, the types of things that we're talking about.
You know, and I think the other two things really, Jim Ricabong said this in his design team meeting. I think Dale mentioned it the last time we meet. It's, it isn't a lack of effort on the part of school districts or teachers. It's that there's a design flaw, and he does a really good job of explaining that. And we keep just adding and adding to a structure that really, and organizing principles that are just, don't work in today's world anymore. So that's why you have to do the restart, basically.
Right.
And I think, oh, and I forgot my...
Well, Nancy, would it, might it even include, I mean, some of the ways we've bracketed and structured transitions, some of the ways we academically group kids, grade levels that we put together, things like that? I mean, there's, there are some pathways to excellence that if you make some tweaks and adjustment, adjustments along with these other things, now you've set your kids up, your teachers up, your students up for being the best, you know, best situation they can be. And there's just some real obvious glaring academic things that our best practices, our educational researchers would say, you know what? You're really putting yourself at a disadvantage before you start if you don't make some of these changes. And so, that, that too will be coming out of our academic group is some of those structural recommendations.
And I, I guess the last point I'd say is I think we're in good company. Rod came across a piece that's been put out by Edina, who is doing similar work really. And it was interesting, they had a nice little video because they're starting to roll out some of their work that they've been doing the last few years around a lot of similar concepts. So, you know, I, we're not alone in trying to take this kind of journey. There's other metro schools doing this work as well, so.
So what level is this going to be for all levels?
Well, there's a lot of implications of the work that we're doing for elementary. So what Rod and I have talked about is once we have secondary sort of well on their way in terms of, of figuring out how we're going to be working with them over the next three to five years, we need to get started with elementary so that they can, we can kind of back map from where we want to be with our graduates to what's going to need to change at the elementary to make a good transition to the secondary.
I could see pre-K too.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yep, exactly. Anything else?
Amazing work.
Yeah.
It is. It's exciting work. It really is exciting.
I know this is early and you're still, you know, you've got a lot going on, but I'm just curious, would it be possible for a student that doesn't really pick a grade to advance in certain coursework to the point where they might pop out of that grade level?
Oh, absolutely.
And that, but so you could be in, maybe subject, you could be in multiple grade levels depending where you're at? And that, and this system allows for managing?
Yes. That's, that's how it should, you know, that's part of you think of the, the Guiding Coalition document. Part of it is, we talked about guaranteed floor with no ceiling. Once you take that ceiling off, you have to be able to accommodate that. So if it's a particular subject and there are two grade levels ahead, then let's let them be two grade levels ahead.
Aren't we kind of doing that already with some of our classes?
You know, what I'm finding, Mary, is we are getting better at it, but there's also some things that have been kind of in our way. So we're, we need to work on some procedures to make things easier around that. And then I think with some of these changes, we'll be able to propel that even further. Yeah.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see if I can get this right. All business action items, 6.1, the 2014-15 preliminary budget. Please hope you're applauding.
And Mike, I know we've had an opportunity to review the preliminary budgets. What, coming out of tonight, what are you hoping that you would like to get from the, the board?
I'm hoping to be able to have approval.
For those at home, the board has had the opportunity to review the documents that Mike has in front of him. And what he's pulling up is fiscal year 215 budget. What I was hoping for was Mike will be looking to approve this as a preliminary budget for '15. Again, we reviewed it, the board has had a chance to review it, but there might be questions that you have, or there might be some call-out items that you'd like Mike to further explain. Or, Mike, you might have some call-out items. I don't think we need to go through each, each item right now, so.
Right. We did spend a half hour, 45 minutes, almost an hour at the last board meeting. There are some things that Dr. Thompson's bringing to the meeting tonight that aren't necessarily included in this budget, but that's why it's only preliminary. I, I think on, on the main page, we would look at the $950,000 increase to the general fund balance because of some revenue changes, and expenditure changes are mostly included.
Mike, can you just, for those that may not be, follow along to school budget, what does that really mean when you say 950 due to changes or whatever? What's, what is the net, what's the simple version of what we're doing?
There were some revenue changes that allowed about a $6.5 million increase to revenue. The, there's expenditure changes, we needed to add some staff for the high schools, that halves 150 students, 150 more students coming in. There was a whole bullet list.
So at the end of the day, I'm looking for a summary statement from you, Mike.
Okay.
At the end of the day, what are we doing?
We're going up 950, projected to go up $950,000 increase in the general fund, which is our, 85% of our budget, which is, again, staff and benefits. And that, that budget will cover all the staffing for the new kindergarten additions. It will cover the additional staff necessary for the growth that we anticipate for, for teachers.
So a quick takeaway might be that we're almost $1 million to the good in the amount of money that we're saving versus spending.
Right. That would be, that'd be correct.
Thank you.
Increase the lunch price. Increase the lunch price, uh, a dime. And I think the only other thing that I wanted to point out is, uh, in the building fund, it shows a twelve point two million dollar increase. That's mostly the kindergarten additions, that's where we'll account for the, uh, kindergarten, the expansion to the, uh, five elementary schools, four classrooms each.
And just for clarity, if I'm, again, I'm someone who's not necessarily following along, we're, you know, we're hiring, we have fifteen new sections of kindergarten, we have specialists because of state statute and on evaluation, we've had to add some assistant principals, we've added to our sta-, uh, CNI or curriculum instruction, teaching and learning to help take care of some things, English language learners. And at the end of the day, we're still saving almost more, more than a million dollars, more than we're spending after we've made our investments, um, in our, in our school district. Is that correct?
That's preliminarily, yes.
Yep. So are there any questions, comments, call outs for Mike on the, um, preliminary budget? And when we say preliminary, that means that they're going to seek, get an opportunity for another month to review and seek feedback and then add.
Right, the nine fifty might be nine hundred or it might be one million fifty or just depending. We're going through the expenditures one more time, trying to nail things down.
And when will we expect to get a final budget approved?
June twelfth or next board meeting. I didn't pay attention.
Nine. Nine.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments?
No, I think it's well done. I think it's reasonable. I think it keeps us on track and leaves us some, um, some room for options as we're going to discuss, I think, after, after this.
I'm in motion to approve the preliminary budget.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to reiterate, Mary, that, um, you know, we've had to make some, by choice and by mandate, some, uh, some expenditures here that are on our list. But even at the end of the day, after we've gone through all of our required, um, adjustments and needful adjustments, we're still going to have approximately a million dollars of savings, um, just in this next fiscal year alone. And I think that's important for someone who might look and say, well, you know, boy, you got all these buildings you're building and these, you got to hire staff and specialists and teaching and learning. Yes, we do, but one of the things about becoming one of the biggest districts in the state of Minnesota is that with that, we're really blessed to have the student enrollment piece where you get the new, you know, couple three hundred students bringing in revenue. Now, we have to spend that wisely, but part of the expectation is, is that the students who are here now need to benefit from these, from these, from the formula. Uh, it's, we're not, we're not a bank, it's not designed for us to take this money in and, and, you know, and excessively take it in and then put it away for a rainy day because as Nancy just demonstrated, it's raining now. Uh, it's time for us to make significant improvement now. And if we keep waiting for the rainy day, it'll never happen. So I, I feel very strongly that, that we can support this budget. And then, um, there are a couple of other items that I'm going to ask you to consider that have a budgetary impact. Um, but it, but we're still in a, in a very good situation. And I would also point out that with that additional nearly a million dollars, that's still keeping us with a fund balance, um, overage of about twenty percent, which in today's day and age, there's a whole lot of school districts who would feel extremely, extremely lucky to be in that kind of a sa-, in a saving situation. And that goes back to, uh, when John McBroom was here and he fought hard to get, um, to a position where it could be nearly twenty percent. And now we've been able to increase and, and, and keep it, um, at the amount that our auditors say that they feel comfortable with. And so I'm very happy with the work that Mike and the finance department have done. And I'm very proud that, um, we're one of the top leaders in the state in terms of being fiscally responsible and also, um, not being afraid to invest in the kids that are here now with the monies that were given for the kids that are here now.
Any other comments?
Well, just kind of one question, you said the level that our auditors suggested, don't they suggest more like eighteen percent? And so we're.
Actually, there, our board policy is eight percent and the auditors say about twelve percent, which is a two month, uh, yeah, two months worth of expenditures.
So our auditors are very comfortable with this.
Yes.
And if you look at most of the increase in expenditures in this, this proposed budget, almost all of it is going directly to the classroom. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion will carry. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Under, uh, item seven, new business discussion items, uh, seven point one is discussion regarding activities and athletics.
Thanks, Mary. Yep, thanks. Uh, just a, I'm looking just for a couple of, um, open dialogue types of things with ultimately, I'm hoping that you'll point me to, um, to do some feasibility studies. We're, we're looking at, um, entering the, the South Suburban Conference. And as we enter that conference, we, I had John Jenke meet with my cabinet and we talked about the, um, gaps that we have in some of the sports. And part of the, part of the, kind of the spirit of joining a, a big conference, big hitter conference like the South Suburban is that we would perhaps look at some of those gaps that we currently have. So what I'm, what, I'll do this in two parts for discussion. Uh, the first one is, is I'd like us to consider doing a feasibility study on the addition of boys and girls Nordic skiing, boys and girls alpine skiing and gymnastics. That's the first feasibility study and I'll make a few comments about that in just a minute. The second one is the feasibility study and of course feasibility is, are there, is there participation? Is there budget, is there need, um, of adding activity buses for fourteen fifteen? So let me go back up to the South Suburban. One of the things that John present, presented to me was back in two twelve, so really not that long ago. Uh, his department did a study of sixth through eleventh graders, almost two thousand, uh, responses here. Actually, it was two thousand responses. And I think that a, a couple of the things, if you were to look at why we might want to consider doing that feasibility study and I, I would suggest we could get that study done before the kids go home. Um, it's one of those things that, um, because of technology, we can get this done pretty quickly. Um, alpi-, alpine skiing, for example, being, uh, out of John's survey, there were thirty-five students. And of course, we used to co-op with Prior Lake, uh, to two thousand twelve, thirty-five students in alpine skiing. I think that's, that's a very, uh, good interest number for that activity. Then, uh, one of the things John asked was, uh, how about the winter sports? Girls gymnastics, three hundred and four member, three hundred and four students said they're, they were interested in participating in gymnastics. Boys Nordic, seventy-seven, girls Nordic, eighty-seven. Uh, again, this is just a anonymous survey, so you don't know clearly how many of those numbers. And a feasibility would have to have a Gantt chart of timelines and benchmarks and, and most importantly, facilities. Because if you look at gymnastics, for example, in our community, we would need to have a, a dedicated space for gymnastics year round. Um, and then as some of, have talked about, when you do a feasibility study, you also includes, include things like, um, adaptive sports. Uh, we, Angela and I were talking about that earlier. Uh, clubs such as there were almost nine hundred students that wanted to participate in an archery club. Uh, there were almost five hundred students interested in a bowling club, uh, table tennis, four hundred. So part of our conversation is defining what we expect of ourselves as a board and what we're willing to invest in when it comes to intramurals. You know, if we're going to offer intramurals, don't we want to be the best at it? If we're going to offer clubs, don't we want to be the best at it? And if we are offering Minnesota State High School League type sports, aren't we going to set ourselves up for success or students have the ability to be the best at it? Um, and then also things such as marching band and orchestra. Uh, we've talked about that a few times, uh, I know at the table. And at this point, two years ago, we had a hundred and fifty students interested in being a part of a marching band and we had a hundred and ninety students, uh, interested, a hundred and eighty-nine interested in the orchestra. And again, some of these things like music can conflict with what we currently have or each other. So part of the conversation we would have to have in this discussion of feasibility is, it's really a, um, some could say pre-K-ish, grades pre-K to two, uh, maybe not as much, but then you start hitting those feeder systems of, of orchestra and strings and all that. Uh, you start looking at the clubs, you start, I mean, there's a lot to it. But I think, uh, in a short period of time, we could get to you some budgetary items. We could get you a Gantt chart, we could get, um, you know, what are kids interested? Uh, we could have John work with Crystal on getting us, uh, updated numbers. Part A, part B, uh, activity buses. We think we could, again, have, with the principal's help and technology, we could find out not only the activity buses for our sports and our music, but homework help after school, um, you know, various clubs, various activities. And, um, as we look at closing our achievement gap, I think, uh, some would argue that perhaps the opportunity gap for our kids socio-economically and otherwise gets in the way that kids can't get home. And, um, I, I know that, um, I sent a, a short preview of tonight's meeting out to our staff and there was a lot of enthusiasm around bringing back the ac-, the activity buses. And so activity buses, um, just as adding any type of sport or music or club, all certainly come with budgets and that's what, uh, I would expect, expect to bring to you before we finalize, um, any, uh, formal budget. Because I would like to see, if we're going to do the activity buses, I would like to see that start next fall. And Mike and I have talked, we could work with, um, Palmer and, and its X number of routes and try to determine what that would look like. And of course, like everything else, you can monitor and adjust that if we've, if we're off or whatever we can work with, Palmer's so good to work with us, we'll, we'll figure it out. So I guess what I'm, what I'm hoping to, through discussion here tonight is to get the go ahead on those two feasibility studies. Thoughts, comments?
Can I ask a question about the activity buses?
Hmm.
How does that, how does that work? If we have kids in eight different activities, is there always an endpoint, always a?
Do you want to come up, Mike? We conceptually talked about east-west, right?
We conceptually talked about east-west, but there are a number of things that we're still going to have to work out. Uh, for instance, in fall sports or in spring sports, boys' baseball uses three different fields that aren't right by a building. So how do you take care of the kids? And, and we haven't worked those, spring sports out, track is all located at Junior High West, but, so there are some issues there. Uh, you know, volleyball would typically be at, at a building, you know, at the high school. It's the ninth through, or the ten through twelve would be fairly simple because a lot of that's right there. And then you do an east and a west or something like that. The junior highs would be a little more difficult. Soccer is over at the soccer complex. Some of them are here and there. So those are all some of the details we haven't worked out yet and we need to, you know, talk about.
Part of that study, we could include some potential.
Add a study, so.
But it's possible.
In theory, what we were talking about were two buses at Junior High East, two buses at Junior High West and two buses at the high school. And each one goes at, you know, at five o'clock or whatever. One goes to the east, one goes to the west or south.
And part of that compromise too is coaches and others have to work. If they know that, if they know that we have it, they have to kind of work within that schedule too.
I think the activity bus is kind of a cornerstone to opening doors to kids who, who either don't have the, the ability to have parents pick them up or whose parents are working or, um, just frankly haven't been part of sports or activities because they can't get home. They need to take the, the regular transportation home. So I think that that's a very important thing. Would love to see some budget around it and some details as to how it would work, um, and what it would do scheduling wise.
I, I got in a, a call to Palmer and we're, I've asked them to start looking at it. They haven't, those were some of the initial questions about how we're going to handle it and.
Certainly as we, uh, keep expanding our student base, you know, we're, we're, we're going to have a natural limit because teams can only be so size, certain size. So anything we can do to expand opportunity and, and the buses, I think, are a part of that, I'd be all for. So I think we should always be looking at that. And, and even beyond the ones you mentioned, what are some of the, uh, student-based things? Like the robotics type of work too that we should be looking at.
Yeah.
Um, if we're talking about limitations to participation, um, included in the discussion, I'm wondering, is there any talk about, um, storage for equipment? Like I know for several of the teams, parents have to come to the schools twice a day, once to drop off the equipment, once to pick up their child from the activity.
I, I don't think we've been that specific yet, but, but I think as part of our, um, like for example, gymnastics opens up the whole facilities question, the storage question and all that. So broad-based, I think there is opportunity to broadly talk about, um, the bringing of, I mean, there's always the problems of bringing of golf clubs and all that kind of, you know. So I think that, that definitely has to be a part of our building our future. And so we can include that as, as part of general overview of what we're doing with, um, increased numbers and increased need for space and then clearly our enrollment crunch. Yeah.
You mentioned something about homework. Would this open the door to offer more opportunities for tutoring and homework as well?
I would a- absolutely think it would. We, we seem to regularly, if you remember our past pilots and experiences, transportation always gets in the way of our, of our, um, homework help and our, some of our kids of color, some of our diversity issues, the, some poverty issues that they just can't get there. And so, um, I absolutely think this would help us.
Any other comments, questions? I'm all for both studies. They fit well into our growing population and if there's a need, let's fill it.
Okay. So I'll plan on bringing that, um, at our next, uh, regular board meeting.
Okay, then we'll go to eight point one, the new business action items and student admission fees to athletic, uh, and performing arts events.
Thanks, Mary. You know, the board has talked informally for some time about, um, how do we create opportunities for kids to, to, um, come celebrate, to be a part of the student body, to gather, to be a gathering place. Uh, when you think about Shakopee, where our teens can go and hang out, um, the safest place for them to be is in our schools. And so, uh, one of the things that we've informally talked about, now I'm going to bring forward in, in, as part of a formal, uh, ask, is that we, Mike and the cabinet and I have talked about the pros, the cons, the budgetary implications of when students want to participate in our, um, in our teams or in our performing arts, but maybe didn't have the skill set or still want to be part of the bleacher creatures or, or tho- those kinds of things. Um, if they really do want to do that, it can be quite a, quite an expense, especially with fam-, you know, larger, well, families and kids and the noticing how our community is changing. We want to be very sensitive so that all students, uh, can participate and be a part of our student body. So what I'm going to, uh, offer up is a proposal that will allow all students in grades nine through twelve, free admission into our athletic and per- performing arts events. And then students in grades K through eight would receive free admission when accompanied by an adult to the event. So I'm going to recommend, uh, approval of that, uh, request.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Uh, discussion?
I think it's, go ahead.
I have a question. Um, so football is a big deal. I think if we get good attendance, what is going to happen when everybody comes to football? Where are you going to sit?
Stand up on the bleachers in front of everybody else.
I mean, there's, to me, my biggest concern is there's just so many kids that already are coming to football and it just seems overwhelming.
My experience has been that we haven't, uh, I don't think we've had a complete, um, sellout, if you, if you might say, where we didn't have space. Uh, we talked about if we allow K through eight students to come in without an adult, how it could be, you know, a, a monitoring issue. I guess my, our cabinet maybe thought that, um, the adults can figure it out and the adults can monitor. Uh, John had brought up the idea of on the student IDs having barcodes. I think that's a great idea so that when someone zips in, it'll say Matt McKeon, grade seven. You know, that he's been in attendance. Also, when, if they get some trouble, you have a scanner, you can figure out who the kid is, that kind of thing. Um, I, it, wouldn't it be great if we had that problem? And I don't, uh, I don't know that I foresee, um, you know, even our biggest games, uh, there always seems to be, um, kids running around. Um, I don't think they're out of control. Kids running around, um, I don't think they're out of control cuz we do a good job of monitoring it, but. Um. I remember during the past referendum, that one of the criticisms I heard is that. Um, no one attends our football games, uh. You might get someone at the homecoming, you might get people at the homecoming game or whatever, but no one attends. Um, you hear our kids talk about how they would like to per- go to these things, but. For them, even going to a volleyball game for four or five bucks and then you. And then you go to a football game for five bucks, I mean, that, that prohibits kids from, from going, so. Um. I don't know what would happen if people did actually show up and sell out our events. I don't know, maybe we'd have to look at building something else.
I'd like to find out.
Chuck?
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm supportive of dropping the, you know, the, the cost, but you know, I wanna, I wanna. Jump forward if I can to eight point two where you're looking at uh, uh, keeping the activity fee, so really what we're telling now is. You have to pay to play, but not pay to watch and that, that feels a little bit wrong to me too.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I think that what the cabinet went to Chuck is that. There is an elite group of people who do pay, but it's because they have the football skills to play. These other kids who no fault of their own are perhaps limited to their ability to contribute to this stu- student body, school spirit. And their ability to contribute is to cheer on their, you know, friends who. Already have a leg up, you might say, on the football field or the volleyball court and, and that kinda thing, so. Uh, it is a philosophical, uh, drawing a line, uh, you know, line in the sand of what, what we believe in and. What we're asking is that with participation fees, um, which will be coming up next. Um, that you review that, our recommendation is, is that we've had great success um. With the majority of our kids and we believe that uh, with kinda the angel fund, if you will, that. We'll, we'll be able to continue doing some of that, but uh. Um, I do, that's why these two are kinda back to back, I suppose, is that. You know, one could say, well, free admission, you could charge twenty bucks for student ID, you could, you could. Use it for good grades, you could use it as a number of things. Um, I, our cabinet is suggest, suggesting that we don't put any um, extra hooks on this. That we see next year when we allow our students to participate as a full-fledged member of the student body with their ID. What does that do for our, our events? Um, you know, it's interesting when you go to section finals and you go to. I think of one of our, you know, we take volleyball, for example, one of our best sports. You know, we're, we're one to three with the opponents um, for student participation. Now, that's probably a bad example cuz that's postseason, but um, I think. Knowing the board and knowing that you guys all attend events. It's kind of a ghost town in some of our winter sports and some of those things, people just aren't going. And uh, the other thing it does do, if you bring a student, their parents are actually paying to get in. It's kinda like when you have the little kids play ball at halftime or they dance. You know, and then of course, when they go, they buy pizza, they buy concessions and all that, so. I'd, I'd be, I'd be interested in how it, how it works itself out and. You know, we make these decisions on a yearly basis anyway and if, if we find out, for example, that we're. You know, we're in jeopardy with the fire marshal because we have too many football fans. Then we would have to make some adjustments and, and um, do some things differently.
And I do have one concern that was in the past too, we have. Opportunity for parents to look for free daycare. And they pay their admission, drop the kids off and leave.
That's what they do now, huh?
Supervised and it's even more of an incentive now cuz they're not paying for the students to, to enter as long as they pay for their admission, that. It's a concern I have, I guess that will be vetted out in the next year when we see how this goes, maybe have to. Tweet things a little bit.
But, but I do wanna, I wanna support what you're saying and, and maybe even, you know, a message to our parents in that. This is, this is a way to increase student participation and belonging, acceptance, school spirit. It is not a babysitting uh, piece and that, you know, I, I think. It would be underestimating our community if we didn't kind of establish that, hey, the responsibility is, is not that you pay your ticket and go. Your responsibility is, is that the spirit of doing this is for your child and we want you there. To help monitor should your student get in trouble or should they do something they shouldn't. Uh, we're not taking the place of the parent there, we're, we're asking them to cooperate with us and if they cooperate with us. It could be a very nice family-friendly activity, but I, our cabinet discussed that too, Mary, and. Um, that's, that's something that could go south if, um, if we don't get the cooperation from our, our community cuz we don't have. No matter how many people we send to a ballgame, we're not gonna have the type of support there. In particular, thinking about football, we're just not gonna have enough people there where we're gonna be able to babysit other people's kids, that's, we just can't do it.
I had three questions, um. Start with the last one, um, this would just be for home activities, so there would be no. Okay, nothing for away.
No.
Um, to your point Chuck and the whole pay to play thing, I was just thinking that that was, it's a good point, but I'm also looking at the fact that this opens doors to. Audience and access for folks where that, that income piece was an obstacle, so some people could simply attend activities. And events that they would not have ever desired to or maybe even thought it was, you know, I don't wanna spend the five bucks or whatever and. Sometimes just getting somebody in the door somewhere is all it takes to actually hook them. And then maybe, you know, participation fees could probably, you know, increase um, based on that. But then the third thing I had was. The student thing is great, I love the, you know, the, the free admission um, for the students, but. Is there any chance that we could, um, and we've talked about this in the past too. Um, kinda bridge that generation gap a little bit and, and maybe look at offering something to our. Um, senior population, I don't mean high school students, um, talk about.
We are, we give it, the senior citizens are in free.
Do they all know that?
I'm sure not.
I'm thinking maybe we can tag this on senior with seniors, I don't know. I see a little marketing opportunity here cuz I think if people don't realize what's available to them.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get that out there a little more.
I agree, and that's something too that we can work on, uh, Crystal, as we kinda talk about whatever action we take. I did wanna go back to what you said Chuck, cuz I forgot to mention, you know, if you're a free and reduced family with the, the compensated, the lunch. Um, um, lunch, if you get free or reduced through John's office, you can sign up, so. You know, to the, to the concern that if you're able to watch it for free, but you have to pay to play. Um, you know, I'm very proud that there are not large, there's a good number of kids that. Get either sliding scale or waived because of that angel fund that takes care of them and I know John's office is really good to. Do that in a um. Uh, a very respectful way and even looking at ways that we can even make it better, but. That's something that would help with that type of a discussion.
Well, I just wanted to commend that program, I think that's fantastic in a district where we have thirty percent free and reduced. Um, just not only from it being the right thing to do, but just to increase athletic competition and involvement and improve student engage- engagement. Finding ways to get those kids to be involved in activities and athletics after school, I think makes them better students. I think makes our teams better, it makes our community stronger, so I think that that program is fantastic.
Any other comments, questions?
Although the formal.
All those in favor signify they sent a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We'll go to eight point two, which is activity fees for the four, two thousand fourteen fifteen year.
Uh, the, I sent to the board, uh, John had a colleague that he worked with that. Did some uh, fee comparisons and now that we've entered the big school, uh, self-suburban conference. I thought it'd be important for the board uh, to take a look at where we're at in comparison to our, to our competition. And then also because Mike is doing um, the preliminary to final budget. Anything we do here has um, budgetary impact, so. The, as um, I mentioned earlier, the cabinet reviewed the activity fee comparisons. And believe that at this time is not the time to increase our uh, activity fees. We, we have a cap as well and I think that um. What we will be asking from you is to keep the, the fees the same. But certainly open to discussion dialogue and/or a request to change it, but. That's where we are at is to keep them where they currently are at.
I guess a question that I have, um, is, you know, it's great that we have this budget now and we've got this surplus right now. Um, what I wanna make sure is we don't hold the line this year and then next year through some, you know, other budgetary issues. Are we at risk of facing, you know, a jump from one twenty to one forty or something where a graduated step would, you know, be proportional?
Um.
You know what I mean, it's so, so next year there's not families who are used to paying one twenty, it's one forty, one fifty or something like that, do we? Do we feel good that this money will be available going forward so we can, you know, stay at, stay at a similar level?
Well, we control that answer, I think, because we determine, especially when it comes to the general fund, we will determine how much. We invest or how much we save and so, um. I, I don't, you know, I don't really have a solid answer for that, other than. Um, we have some major projects on the horizon that will affect how we spend and what we spend it on, so. Um, I don't see anything in the near future that's going to force us to up our fees significantly. Um, but it's, it's always a choice.
Yeah, I think that's just something for us to be cognizant of going forward that if we, that, not necessarily that we have to stay at one twenty for the next decade, I just. Wanna make sure that if there are moves, there are small moves and a family doesn't get two kids in sports and then next year helps their fees double or some, you know. Maybe it's more of a call up for us to think about long-term.
Hmm. And it, probably for those at home, it's probably pretty tough to see it up there, but you can, uh, just in summary. Um, if you are a member of this community, our, our students to be able to participate in. In various fall, winter, spring activities are paying a hundred and twenty dollar participation fee. And I'll take um, football for example. And Crystal or Sarah, can you blow that up on football, just for people at home?
Yeah, I end up running both sides.
Okay, so maybe I'll just, I'll just go over it, Prior Lake, for example, is uh, two twenty, one eighty for Bloomington. Hopkins, two thirty. Uh, let's see, who do we have there with the co-op?
Um, Armstrong.
Armstrong, co-op, sure. Cooper, Armstrong, Cooper. Um, then we got one ninety-six at one thirty-four, one sixty Burnsville, Lakeville, two seventy-five, one eighty Farmington. Chaska Chan, two fifty, Wayzata, one sixty, Tonka, two ten. So really what we're grappling with as a district or as a board is um, right now, as you can tell. But, but we're also the, the newest, the new member that's coming in, um, we can. See how this year goes, take a look, do a s- you know, be ready to make an adjustment next year. Um, we can appreciate that we don't kick kids out of our system by not. Letting them participate because of the, of the fees are reasonable right now for, for families. Um, or as, as Matt pointed out, maybe you wanna look at jumping everything up twenty, thirty bucks and then. That helps avoid some of the um, some of the bumps that we may or may not decide to do in the future.
Cuz we are the lowest of any of the districts in just about every single one of the sports.
Why is that is the only one even really close?
And I, I do know our transportation costs will be going down a little bit without trips to Reddley and Hudson and some other places, but.
Well, and if you look at, for example, in the winter, if you look at, um, for example, you got boys and girls hockey, I know there's been some discussion about. You know, when you play boosters and then you go into our varsity, you know, how the cost actually goes down. And you can see, for example, Lakeville, six hundred, six hundred dollars for a fee at the highest end, you got four fifty for Prior Lake. Um, you know, and then we're at one twenty, so you can see how there are some big discrepancies throughout the. Throughout the chart and, you know, if we're not ready to decide tonight, we don't have to decide tonight, we can take a month to look at it and. Come back in June as we, as we set the budget. Of course, any dollars that we raise through this would then just increase our general fund um, savings.
But then we're also, if we go with the no admission for students. We're gonna, the general fund will go down a little bit as well. It's not super significant, whether it would be a twenty dollar increase in. And fees across the board would be probably offset the free admission.
I have a question, just on setting fees, there, nobody's gonna set pricing. In such a way that it prices somebody in or out of an activity, that, I would imagine that's not any philosophy, but. What has the districts, this probably being for Chuck and Mary, has there been sort of a specific district philosophy on how to set fees? You wanna try to recoup a percentage of the cost?
Yeah, we're not gonna recoup anything close to.
Basically, are we aligned with the other districts?
Yeah.
Okay, so there isn't an actual.
No.
Okay.
Not that I remember.
And to a great extent, you know, we're kinda proud to actually be one of the lower, you know, within the conference. And even still, I, I, I don't know, I, I, if we went up even a little bit on some of them, I'd, I'd like to find a way to offset that and. Provide a student perhaps with the opportunity to try a sport for the first year, not pay a fee. You know, but then again, our, our angel fund kinda helps to do that anyway, so.
It seems to me our message with not allowing or for, forgiving the admission to games is. We want everybody to have opportunities. So to me, it seems as if we raise these, it's kind of contradictory to what we're trying to say.
Which is why I brought that up last time.
I would recommend just keeping them at least for this year.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Discussion? Anything else?
I think it's great, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we don't get ourselves in a ring and we just, this is my full bit. No, I think it's great, I think it's fantastic to be the lowest round, creating opportunity.
Any other discussion?
Just a reminder that we, this time next year, we can revisit those two and if we need to make adjustments, we can do that.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor signify they sent a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will carry, since we have a really brief assistant superintendent update tonight.
That's right.
And things of that nature.
Okay, item ten, superintendent update.
Alright, so what I wanna do is I wanna just give you a brief um, snapshot of the agenda for. Um, this Thursday at six PM, we have the Framework for Education Forward Group. And that's our um, Excellence in Operations and Facilities Action Team. And just a reminder to everyone that this group is uh, somewhere around a hundred people to a hundred and twenty with our admin team that'll be there. And what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna take and reconfirm the purpose of what we're doing there. We're gonna look at what the group responsibilities are and what the group roles are. Um, we'll go through and take a reflection time to look at all the work we did the last time. Some of us were uh, split up, some of us went to guiding coalition, some of us stayed with this action team. So for those of us in attendance that night, we're gonna um, kinda just take and re- refine the, the guiding coalition. Um, or the guiding change document and then take a, a real good look at what the action team does versus what the guiding coalition does. Uh, we're gonna discuss the uh, summary of the perceptions and observations, the group did some small group work. And um, the minutes, everything's up on the website, by the way, but we're gonna just kinda. Make sure that everyone's aware of what the perceptions were, what the current realities were. And then we're gonna start some of the base work, the reset work, and that is, we have to come up with some baseline data. And that baseline data is our current land inventory, our current facility inventory. Our building capacities, current utilizations, student enrollments and student projections. We can't get far until we can get our heads around those, those three major, major areas. We also then in small group need to look at our growth and our capacities and. And start asking questions of what information's needed before we can get our heads around um. Exactly where, where with these projections, where we're physically going to start putting kids. Um, as with this fall, we start um, the school year out over capacity already this fall. So I think all in all, this meeting um, on the fifteenth. Uh, will be a, a good meeting, be a positive meeting and again, I'm really thankful that we have that many people. Willing to come together for the benefit of our students, so. I think that's it, Mary, um, other than this uh, this Friday, we have our retirement event at Canterbury. And we also have um, our. And we also have our Teachers of the Year will be celebrated and our mentor mentees. And I know some of you will be in attendance for that. And then, of course, graduation. Angela will be sending you some stuff if you don't already have it on what's expected of graduation. And we'll talk more about that as well in the upcoming days. That's it?
Committee updates? Any committees meeting? You guys make it so easy, I could have skipped out on two, huh? Information items, anything Angela? Matt? Chuck?
Yeah, I got the opportunity last Sunday to go to the Teacher of the Year banquet. And Billy Kenny was one of the top ten finalists. And actually, for a short period of time, he was one of the two finalists. As they were going through an announcing, they, they let out a little he and there were only two males. But I don't, I don't want to forget the other people. You know, Casey Rutherford was in there as a quarter finalist. And we had six teachers nominated, most of any of the districts. And the same last year, I think last year, we had seven teachers were nominated. So I also want to congratulate Sarah Adler, Bruce Fink, Aaron Heilmann, Meredith Hicks and Carissa Simpson. We have a great group of teachers and it's good to see it didn't get recognized at the state level.
Thank you. Sean?
I'd like to just quick, just for anyone watching at home, something I'm really excited about right now is on our Shakopee Public Schools website, the Education Forward tab, there's now an information library. And I think it's something that is very important to, to share. I, I heard a lot that transparency was a concern for a lot of people in the past several months. And so if you take a look on there, there's a lot of information. We're going to continue to add to it as far as I am aware. And it's just a great resource. Just want to make people aware of it. Scott?
I had the opportunity to attend at the high school, I believe it was on the twenty fourth of April, the secondary educate, secondary art exhibit. And as luck would have it, my daughter had an entry, which was really cool. So going to see her stuff was neat, but I found myself absolutely mesmerized walking around and seeing all the cool stuff. So athletics is fantastic, arts fantastic, but I, and I've never really been a big visual artist, but there's really cool stuff made by really talented kids. So I just wanted to call out congratulations to all those kids that had, had an entry there.
And a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to assign path to Mrs. Jacobson's class. They had a, a writing assignment to do research and write a letter asking about their topic that they were interested in. And the student wrote to the school board about the, why we don't have, why aren't we building more schools? And the crowding and they don't want, she doesn't want art in a pirate and some of the things that she, she researched the project extremely well. So I, with the help of Crystal, wrote a letter and reply and then went to the class to read it. And then I let the students ask me questions. Never, never opening yourself up to fifth graders' questions about, about school. But it was, it was fantastic. The, the research that she had done was amazing. She knew all the little things about the growing population and how the schools are overcrowded and, and, you know, the need for more opportunities for students and how overworked teachers are with too many students in the classroom. She had really done her homework. So it was really fun to go there and talk to the students. I believe I'll be making a return trip because another student has written a letter about the need for increase, recess time. Oh, no, no. You think it's just a play. No, he researched it out so that he's done online research about how activity makes you more attentive in class and less fidgety. It's also very good because of the rising obesity rate among students. They have really researched these topics. So trying to come up with an answer was quite difficult because I agree with them that, you know, students need more activity outside and chances to let off a little steam. But I, you know, basically came back with a question, where do we put it in the school days? So I'll be back this week to read a little about students. And hopefully I will not get another one that's too, why school lunches aren't better or something along those lines. But the class has done amazing work doing the research. It's not just because I want to go, you know, have fun or anything like that. It's they, they go on and figure out all the reasons to justify their positions. With that, go to upcoming meetings. I think I'll just go through the, through the May ones.
Yeah.
The May fifteenth Excellence in Operations and Facilities Action Team at six PM at the High School Zillia Gym. The sixteenth of May is our recognition and retire re-celebration at Canterbury Park. On May twenty first is a retirement party for Shaleen Roth and Kim Swift at Stonebrook Golf Club. May twenty second is the guiding coalition meeting between six and nine PM at the, in the High School Commons. And May twenty seventh is the joint board and city council meeting session at the Shakopee City Council chambers at seven forty-five. And I, I will say June seventh is a, a high school graduation at six PM at Grace Church in Eden Prairie. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Formed.
One second. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're now adjourned.